Can I ask that everybody mute their microphones? Good evening, this is a special meeting of the Fairfield Representative Town Meeting, including the annual budget vote on June 1st, 2020. I'm Karen Whackerman, the moderator of the RTM and representative of District 7. I ask the town clerk to please call the roll.
Steve Chessery?
Here.
Mike Mahoney?
Yes.
Veronica Monahan? Amy O'Shea? Bill Gerber? Karen McCormick?
Here.
Cindy Perron?
Here.
Jeff Steele?
Here.
Alex Durrell?
Here.
Matt Jacobs?
Here.
Scott Nickel?
Here.
Sharon Pastilli?
Here.
Laura Carson?
Here.
Alice Kelly?
Here.
Margaret Thudnack?
Here.
Martha Spohier?
Here.
Josh Carson?
Julie Gottlieb?
Here.
Joe Seibert?
Here.
Jay Walk?
Here.
Matt Ambrose?
What's going on there?
Hannah Gale?
Here.
Lisa Havy?
Right here.
Trishapal Dunmore?
Here.
Lauren Bovey?
Here.
Mark McDermott?
Here.
Jill Vergara?
She's here, I know.
Karen Whackerman?
Here.
Hank Farron?
I'm here, Betsy.
Christine Messina?
Here.
Keith Holman?
Here.
Drew George Addis?
Here.
Rick Grauer?
Here.
Chrissy Kelly?
Here.
Bill Perdini?
Here.
Dana Allenello?
He's here.
Mrs. Foltz Belli?
I'm here.
Frank Patrice?
Here.
Ringo?
Betsy, it's Pam Iakono, you skipped over me, I'm here.
I'm sorry, Pam.
No worries.
Okay, thank you, let's say the Pledge of Allegiance, please. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let's pause for a moment of silence, both to remember those in Fairfield and elsewhere who have been lost to COVID-19, and also to honor George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and Tony McDade, who were all killed by police officers in the past week, and pray for the end of all racial injustice. Thank you. Representative Durrell, do you, did you want a moment of personal privilege?
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Alex Durrell, RTM 3, and in my most important role as a parent, in this case of a graduating high school senior. Recognizing that milestone, I want to publicly acknowledge my congratulations, appreciation, and heartfelt empathy for all high school seniors here in Fairfield and beyond during this ceremonial rite of passage into adulthood. Instead of possibly experiencing and celebrating together some of the happiest 100 days of their lives, everything changed unlike anything we have ever seen before. This class singularly stands alone. Forced to sacrifice, persevere, and move on, they will never be forgotten in our hearts and minds. While I will not speak for all their parents and guardians, I would do anything to turn back time and give them their one shining moment in what everybody envisioned. However, to paraphrase Barack Obama, "We will all get past this disappointment and help them and let them start their next chapter in life and make Fairfield and the rest of the world a better place." Thank you for the privilege of your time, and let us all go forward together. Congratulations to the one and only class of 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Durrell, it was very nice. Okay, we're going to move to Item 2, which is to consider and act upon the minutes of the special meeting held on April 27th, 2020. May I please have a motion to approve that? To approve the minute? Representative Spohier has moved to approve, can I have a second?
Oh, second.
Representative Jacobs. Okay. Any comments on the minute? All in favor of approval, please unmute your, your microphones and we're going to take a vote on this? Okay, all in favor of approval of the minute, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, thank you, the motion is approved unanimously, thank you. We're moving to Item 3 now. To hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Whereas federal monies are available under the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program administered by the State of Connecticut Department of Housing pursuant to Public Law 93-383 as amended, and whereas pursuant to Chapter 127(c) and Part 6 of Chapter 130 of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Commissioner of Housing is authorized to disburse such federal monies to local municipalities. And whereas it is desirable and in the public interest that the town of Fairfield accept from the state a grant in the amount of $313,939 in order to undertake a Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Tranche 2 Project Water Pollution Control Microgrid, and to execute an assistance agreement therefore, should one be offered. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Fairfield is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for state assistance imposed by Part 6 of Chapter 130 of the Connecticut General Statutes, and that the acceptance by the town of Fairfield of a Disaster Recovery Community Development Block Grant to be used for the Water Pollution Control Microgrid in an amount not to exceed $313,939 is hereby approved, and further resolved that the First Select Woman Brenda L. Kupchak be and hereby is authorized on behalf of the town of Fairfield to accept and expend such grant, and further resolved that the First Select Woman be and hereby is authorized on behalf of the town of Fairfield to execute any and all necessary documents to secure said grant. May I have a motion to approve this resolution? Representative McDermott, seconded by, somebody, Representative Durrell. Thank you. Is there any discussion, oh first, let me ask if Mr. Bowman from the Department of Public Works is on the call?
I am.
Oh, hello, how are you?
Very good.
Good, can you give us a little description of what's going on here?
Sure. When we first approved the microgrid, like five years ago, and the contract was like two and a half million dollars. Since then, major modifications came necessary, the town changed the scope of the project. By addition of the fuel cell, the 1,000 kW solar project, two new pumps for the hardening project, expanded fire training center, plus state regulations for backup power during construction shutdowns, and the electrically designed for the fire training, conservation garage, and animal shelter had to be revised amid these buildings the functions were power outage during the microgrid. And so all these were change orders to the original contract. The state of Connecticut, you know, approved it and 100%, and so we're now asking the town to approve it so we can go on with the project.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from Mr. Bowman? If you could please let me know in the chat field, that will be the easiest way for me to see you. Give you a little more time in case anyone has a question or comment. Okay, I don't see any, thank you, Mr. Bowman. We'll move to the vote then. Thank you. Can everybody please unmute and we can vote on this item? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Okay, thank you, the motion passes unanimously, thank you. Please mute again. Okay, we'll turn now to Item 4. Can you all mute? I know it's so hard to be muting and unmuting the whole meeting, but, okay. We're turning to Item 4. To hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Resolve that the program year 45, October 1, 2019 to September 30, 2020, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Action Plan, be and hereby is amended to include a supplemental appropriation of $306,842 to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus pandemic, and further resolve that Brenda L. Kupchak, First Select Woman of the Town of Fairfield, be and hereby is authorized to execute any and all necessary documents that facilitate the town's participation in said CDBG program. May I have a motion to approve, please? Representative Bovey, seconded by Representative Gale. Mr. Barnhart, are you on the call? Mark Barnhart? Perhaps not. I guess he's not on the call. So we don't have the opportunity to hear from him about this motion and we'll go directly to the vote, unless anybody has any questions or comments they want to make before we vote. If you do, please chat and put it in the chat box. Okay, so we'll take a vote on this, please unmute your microphones. Okay, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Abstained? Okay, thank you, the motion passes unanimously, thank you. Okay. You can mute, mute back up there. Our next item is Item 5. To hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Resolve that the attached resolution recommended by the Director of Solid Waste and Recycling between the Town of Fairfield, can someone mute, please? And South Central Connecticut Regional Water Authority to confirm participation in the Regional Household Waste Collection Center, be and hereby is approved. May I have a motion to approve, please? Representative Kelly? Representative McDermott is seconding it. Thank you. Mr. Hurley, oh no, sorry, Mr. Zambroski from Solid Waste and Recycling, are you on the call?
Yes, I am.
How are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
Yes, I can, how are you?
Good. Would you mind just giving us a little description of what's going on here? It's our, basically our membership with the Regional Water Authority has ways central. So every Saturday, the residents could drive to New Haven from 9:00 to 12:00 and drop off hazardous materials and the have our collection this year. And the end of August, the last Saturday in August. It's just basically the proposal to tell them we're going to pay our bill.
Oh, okay.
It's the agreement to staff it.
Participate in the program?
Participate to staff it on a collection up there. Sometimes we get volunteers from the town that will volunteer up there. If we don't, then we will have to hire public works employees to go up there to New Haven one Saturday and then we have the collection here.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Zambroski or any comments? Representative Pastilli?
Hi, Sharon Pastilli, District 3, hi, Mike.
Hi, Sharon.
I was just curious to know, you know, because of COVID-19, are we going to have to make any amendments to how we implement hazardous waste day?
Uh, right now what they're doing there is they're having to sign up first. They have a link, we have a link I'm going to put on our webpage that you would sign up, you would automatically fill the form out, you know, the forms that we fill out here, the residents. You fill it out online and then you would, it automatically goes into the database. And when the resident gets there, they just give them their name, they already have it, so there's minimal controversy.
All right, great, that sounds like a great idea, thank you, Mike.
Sure.
Representative Iakono?
Pam Iakono, District 8, I'm sorry, I, Mr. Zambroski, is this the resolution that was adopted by the Board of Selectmen where they had amended it?
Uh, yes, I'm not sure what was the amendment, I didn't see it.
Is there anybody who can clarify if this is the exact, the exact resolution that the Board of Selectmen adopted?
Yes, Representative Iakona, yes, this item was amended at the Board of Selectmen not to exceed the amount in the budget.
Okay.
I'm not sure what, I didn't see what your, what your backup is. Is that not included?
I don't know, I, to be honest, I wasn't sure, I was just asking if anybody knew for certain if it's in the backup, but that's what the resolution is in the backup?
Does the town clerk know, perhaps, Betsy?
Because it was supposed to be amended in the minutes of that meeting.
I just want to make sure we're adopting the right thing, yeah.
Yes. No, it has the language in there, budget, it's in that resolution.
Okay, thank, thank you very much for the clarification, I apologize.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Zambroski, for your time. We'll turn now to a vote. Can everyone unmute, please? Okay, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Abstaining? Okay, thank you, the motion passes unanimously. Okay. We will move to now Item 6 on the agenda. To hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance. Whereas on February 25th, 2019, the Town of Fairfield RTM approved the $200,000 in non-recurring capital to fund design project costs associated with Grasmere Neighborhood Pedestrian Improvements Project. Whereas on March 20th, 2020, the Town of Fairfield received the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation Commitment to Fund Letter approving the LOTCIP Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program application in the amount of $2,147,800 for the Grasmere Neighborhood Pedestrian Improvements Project. And whereas the acceptance of the $2,147,800 Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program grant to fund project costs associated with the Grasmere Neighborhood Pedestrian Improvements Project, of which 100% of said project costs are paid by the state prior to construction based on portion of contract bid by said grant and appropriated $2,147,800 for said project costs. Now therefore be it resolved that First Select Woman Brenda L. Kupchak be and hereby is authorized to accept and sign any agreements between the Town of Fairfield and the federal government or the State of Connecticut related to and any additional Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program grant funding associated with the Grasmere Neighborhood Pedestrian Improvements Project. May I have a motion to approve this resolution? Representative Gale, seconded by Representative Carson. Thank you, Mr. Hurley?
Bill, comma, Alex, exclamation mark.
Pardon? Oh, Mr. Hurley, Bill Hurley, are you here?
Uh, yes, good evening.
Hi, how are you?
I'm fine. Uh, I'll just explain a little bit if, if need be, for the Grasmere Neighborhood Pedestrian Improvements Grant is based on a road safety audit performed by the town, the state, the police department, economic director, and other interested parties a few years ago. The town also hosted a neighborhood meeting with local RTM members and residents of Shoreham Village, Shoreham Terrace, and Grasmere Avenue. The project consists of new and wider sidewalk improvements, ADA compliant ramps, road narrowing, additional signs, pavement markings, curb, driveway aprons, and a potential pedestrian crossing warning lights or pedestrian signal, minor drainage, and streetscape improvements. Back in February 2019, the town boards approved $200,000 for the design costs and the LOTCIP grant covers 100% of the eligible construction costs currently set for $2.14 million once the commitment to fund agreement is signed.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Hurley or any comments on this matter? I will say I'm very grateful on behalf of my district because they're covered by this and it's going to make a big improvement for the residents. So thank you for working so hard to get this.
Thank you, and thanks for being patient.
Okay, we'll turn to, we'll turn to the vote now, Mr. Hurley, you'll stay with us for the next item, I hope, right?
Correct.
Okay, we'll turn to the vote now on the Grasmere Neighborhood Pedestrian Improvements Project. So if you could unmute your microphones? Okay, all in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, the motion passes unanimously. We'll turn to the next item, Item 7. To hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance. Whereas on March 17th, 2020, the Town of Westport approved the acceptance of a federal local bridge program grant to fund design project costs associated with the Kings Highway West, Greens Farms Road, and Wakeman Lane, Old Road Bridges, shared with the Town of Fairfield. And whereas per state and town agreement, the cost of design for the bridge replacement rehabilitation would receive 80% reimbursement from federal aid with the remaining 20% from state funds. Whereas the cost of rights of way activities and the cost of the construction phase after the final design plans are completed would receive 80% reimbursement from federal aid and the remaining 20% from local funds, resulting in 10% from the Town of Westport and 10% from the Town of Fairfield based on state statute and prior agreement. Now therefore be it resolved that First Select Woman Brenda L. Kupchak be and hereby is authorized to accept and sign any agreements between the Town of Fairfield and the Town of Westport, the federal government or the State of Connecticut related to and any additional federal local bridge program grant funding associated with the Kings Highway West, Greens Farms Road, and Wakeman Lane, Old Road Bridge Projects. May I have a motion, I see that Representative Vergara has moved to approve this resolution, can I have a second? Representative McDermott? Thank you, Mr. Hurley, can you address this one?
Uh, sure. This is part of a special pilot program where the state and the Town of Westport and obviously the Town of Fairfield, where the towns don't have to pay for the design costs. They're trying to streamline, the state's trying to streamline the design so it doesn't take so long. And we have also been given approvals to participate in the federal bridge program where ultimately the town would only pay 10% of the construction costs and 10% of the right-of-way costs if, if applicable. The bridges are listed on the waterfall chart and, and we're going to eventually, after the design is done, we're going to have to come back to all the boards for a separate funding resolution for the right-of-way and the applicable, the construction phase. That would be at about 12 to 18 months after the design is, starts.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Hurley on this item or any comments? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much, Bill, for, for coming and speaking with us.
Oh, okay.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
And we'll turn now to the vote, if everyone can, can take their mics off mute. Okay, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you very much, motion passes unanimously. Item 8, we're now turning to the, the budget items. We've finished our regular business here, so we'll move to Item 8, which is to consider and act upon self-supporting funds in the amount of $6,009,833 for the Water Pollution Control Authority for the fiscal year of July 1, 2020 through June 20, 21. May I have a motion to approve this? Jill Vergara, seconded by Representative Gottlieb, thank you. Are there any discussions on this item? Okay, I don't see any, so we'll move to the vote, please unmute your mics.
Karen, Madam Moderator?
Yes, yes.
I believe we got an adjustment on WPCA from Mrs. Gardner.
Oh, did we?
Yeah, it said $986 amount adjustment for fuel. Mrs. Gardner on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line, this is Linda Gardner. That's correct, the pricing reflects the better pricing we were able to secure on motor vehicle fuel. It translates to a decrease of $986 in the motor vehicle and fuel line.
So, Ms. Gardner, do you have the final number so I can make sure my math is correct?
Right.
That we should be approving?
You would be taking that line to 1,90902, 19,902.
So, Madam Moderator, Representative Iakono, I believe what you need is a motion, which I'd be happy to make, in the amount of $9... I'd be happy to make, in the amount of $986.
So this is a motion to reduce the amount, okay.
Correct.
That would be great, yes. If you could make, you're making that motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Can somebody second that motion, please? Representative Garskoff? Okay, thank you. So first we'll have a vote on that motion unless anyone has any questions or discussions about that item. Okay, so if you could unmute, we'll vote first on that motion to reduce the amount by $986. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Is that an opposed? I can't tell. Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. So that motion passes. So we are now going to move, vote on the main motion, which is the amount of $6,12,983 less $986, that total amount. Can I have a motion? We already have a motion, so now we'll vote on that. Can you unmute and we'll vote on this main motion? Okay. Everyone in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Anybody, anyone opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. The motion as amended passes unanimously. Thank you. Item nine, to consider and act upon self-supporting funds in the amount of $172,984 for the Regional Fire Training School for the fiscal year of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. May I have a motion to approve this item? Representative McDermott? Representative Param, second. May I, are there any comments or questions about this item? Okay, seeing none, if everyone could unmute, we'll vote on this item. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. That motion passes unanimously. And we'll move to our final item, to consider, item 10, to consider and act upon proposed appropriations in the amount of $318,294,856 for the fiscal year of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, as recommended by the Board of Finance for any lawful purpose. The total proposed budget as approved by the Board of Finance is as follows. Board of Finance recommended budget, $318,294,856, less noncurrent tax year revenue of $26,801,32. Net revenue to be raised by current year taxation, $291,493,824, plus senior tax relief, $3,323,000, plus reserve for uncollected taxes and other credits, $4,915,924, and leaving a gross amount to be raised by taxes of $299,732,748. May I have a motion to, I'm going to think that I'm already seeing it, that Representative Ringel has moved to approve this resolution and Representative Seibert has seconded. Is there any discussion?
Representative Vergara? Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. Jill Vergara, I'm a representative for District Seven. I am the Majority Leader for the Democratic Caucus, and I'd like to move to reduce the budget in the amount of $924,679 in a bipartisan package of cuts. The first cut would be line 2531, private school bus transportation, 58500 contributions to other, reduced by $323,973 to reflect savings realized in the first student bus contract, the fiscal year 20 savings to be credited in fiscal year 21. The second item that I would like to move is 8010, Board of Education, reduced by $564,706 to reflect savings realized in the first student bus contract, fiscal year 20 savings to be credited in fiscal year 21. I think I forgot to mention that for this item, it's line 58900. The next item is motor vehicle fuel savings across several departments of $36,245. I don't know if I have to list all of those departments separately. I can if I, if I need to.
I don't think that's necessary. Representative Iacono is, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Is there more?
I wanted to say that this budget has been definitely a learning process that's been grueling and rewarding. It's a difficult and challenging time, but we've met the challenge together. Working across aisle and building relationships with my Republican colleagues has been really important. As we do our jobs together, interrogating the budget and asking the hard questions as each of our caucuses have done, we help the town heal and we also do the right thing in lowering the tax burden for our residents at this economically challenging time. We've worked together to find ways to reduce the tax burden for our town, and I'm proud of that. It's important to come together at this time, lean on each other, trust each other, and work towards the common goal of helping our town during these tough times. My caucus pushed the town for savings realized in the fiscal year due to COVID, and we were able to find the private school bus savings. The Republican caucus took a harder look at those bus savings and found further savings that will really help everyone. These proposed reductions that I'm now offering represent a bipartisan package of cuts that both caucuses have worked hard on and have agreed to.
Thank you, Representative Vergara. Representative Iacono has seconded the motion. Does anyone have any comments? Representative Iacono?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Pamela Iacono, District Eight. I would like to extend my thanks to Representative Vergara, and she's correct in the fact that we've had a very good dialogue in working towards the betterment of Fairfield, and I'm very happy that we were able to find these savings. I'm very happy that my colleagues across the aisle accepted the additional savings that our Republican team was able to find so that we were able to work collectively, all of us, for the betterment of Fairfield. And I do appreciate that dialogue. We, as a caucus, are offering up some more considerations this evening to help get us to a zero. But in the meantime, I am extremely grateful to the open dialogue that we had on the particular motion that Representative Vergara has put forward.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll move ahead to the vote then, if you can all unmute. Okay, all in favor of the motion in front of us, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Are there any other motions or comments on the budget? Representative Iacono?
Thank you, Representative, thank you, Madam Moderator. I would like to make a motion and then if I get a second, then I'd like to provide the information behind that. But at this time, I would like to move to eliminate the positions of foremen in the amount of $66,477 and maintenance repairman in the amount of $60,237 from the Department of Public Works, 51010 regular payroll, and the appropriate corresponding benefits, 52100 health insurance in the amount of $55,746, and 52200 social security in the amount of $9,693 for a total budget reduction of $192,153.
Thank you. And the motion has been seconded by Representative Vergara.
Thank you. I, yes, please. I've moved to make this motion this evening for everyone's consideration. In talking with the administration, the First Selectwoman has indicated that, you know, we all want to be a part of getting the budget to zero so that there isn't a tax burden on our families, and she had indicated that these positions were going to be left vacant. And I had spoken to the departments about what further ideas they had for the positions, and they came back to me and indicated that they, they could be eliminated, and that's the reasoning for my motion this evening.
Are there any other comments from the body?
Sorry, just had to unmute. Julie Gottlieb, District Five. I'm certainly open to moving forward to this. I just have some questions. I know the administration put, I forget, eight or nine different versions of cuts in front of the Board of Finance through all the reiterations, and these have not been in there. I believe the Board of Finance asked about the vacancies and were told that everything that was, all were needed and important. So I'm just trying to get a sense of if the foreman and the repairman positions aren't necessary, has something changed? Why are they being brought forward now?
Is there someone who can address that? I don't know if it's the First Selectwoman or Representative Iacono?
Madam Moderator? It's Brenda.
Yes, hello.
Well, I said early on, and I can't recall if I shared it with the Board of Finance, although I did spend quite a bit of time with them over the last couple of months, but I had not wanted to fill any vacant positions because the, my thought process coming in was I wanted to evaluate each of the departments very closely and private work, and I've mentioned that on a number of occasions in public, to find efficiencies and be able to reorganize our departments so they do work in a more efficient way and that we do have cost savings. So obviously, after the Board of Finance vote, we still had a chunk, you know, we still had a percentage that was up. So I really worked hard, went through the departments, and I spoke to the Department of Public Works, and then we also did a lot of work looking at the bus savings and meeting with the Education Administration and trying to find the savings so that we could. Because the ultimate goal, and I know that you all share in that, is to come, we wanted to get to a zero. We felt that that was really important, and obviously it was very difficult. So we looked at this closely, and I spoke, I spoke, I spoke with Representative Iacono, we spoke with the department head, and these two positions, we felt, he felt, our Director of Public Works, were positions that we could absorb without any cuts to services. And it was, I mean, obviously in an effort to, to get to a zero, something that we really needed to do and make sure we maintain positions that are critical to the operations of the
That's helpful. Could I ask one more follow-up question?
Sure.
Kupchak or, probably for Ms. Kupchak. So my other questions are, we do, at some point, we want to bring in a new head of the DPW. Are you comfortable that, you know, these two positions not being there, that you're bringing somebody on, is it, are there any optics related to having the vacancies? Are there any issues where, you know, somebody's going to come on and then want, you know, wish those people were in those positions? And then I think the final piece of it is, obviously, there's, there's been a DPW audit in process, which I believe we're going to, we're going to see this week. Any, you know, so there's a lot, to me, that feels like there's a lot of questions, uncertainties that might come up from the audit, a lot of work that needs to be done, projects that need to be undertaken. You're comfortable then with these spots being gone in all those, in all those scenarios?
Yes, Representative, like again, I spoke to the current Public Works Director who has been, you know, handling that position for some time, and he's done a very good job. And we believe we can deliver the services and in it, with the staff that we have. He didn't feel uncomfortable a lot at all, and we spoke at great length about it.
Great, that's, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Representative Jacobs, did you have a question?
My question was answered, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so the motion before us is to cut the open foreman position, Representative Iacono, please correct me if I get the details wrong. The salary is in the amount of $66,477, and medical benefits of $27,283, and social security $5,085, and to cut the repairman open role also, which is in the salary of $60,237, medical benefits of $27,283, and $4,608 in social security, for a total of Is that correct, Representative Iacono?
For a total of $192,153.
Okay, oh, yes, yes, sorry. 190, thank you.
Yeah, so the final, the final tally is 192153.
Okay, thank you very much. So we're going to take a vote on whether to approve this motion. Can everybody unmute? Okay, okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? I'm opposed, one vote. Anybody else?
Aye. Aye.
We may need, does the town clerk need names of the people who are opposed?
Can you put them in the chat?
You need the names.
Okay. Yeah, we do need the names. Can people put in the chat if you're opposed?
And I'll read them aloud.
Thanks, Matt. Where's that at? I'm not. Wait, 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 wait. Betsy, who do you have? Betsy?
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, now I hear you, yes.
Did you hear them all?
Can you just confirm? Yeah, can, I didn't hear them all, no, I only heard the first couple.
Jacobs, Whackerman, Georgiades, Odenak, Alice Kelly, Ambrose, Boe, Wolf, Havy, Seaver.
Okay, anybody whose name wasn't called, can you write in the chat? Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody abstaining? Okay, thank you. So, I, I gathered, uh, for the town clerk that the motion passed?
It's thirty in favor, ten opposed.
Okay. Thank you. So, the motion passes, thank you. Um, are there any other comments or motions? Representative Spohyer?
Thank you. Um, Martha Spohyer, District Four. Um, I'm seeing a motion for discussion purposes, um, as a motion I'm going to make, uh, I think needs to be heard, um, and our thoughts on it. Um, my motion is, I would like to make a motion, one-zero-one-zero, First Selectman's Office line, five-one-zero-one-zero, regular payroll, to reduce by forty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-one, bring the line items to four hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars, which reflects a decrease in the salary of the Chief Administrative Officer, and the associated benefit of twelve thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Uh, is there a second? Representative Kelly, Alice Kelly. Um, did you want to, um, address it further, Representative Spohyer?
Yes, um, I just wanted to bring this motion, um, to the table, um, more for discussion purposes. I know as a caucus, we have gone back and forth on this, um, item of what to do, um, and so I will start with my concerns, as I felt that it was important to get them on the record. Um, my concerns with the CAO position, and my initial, um, feeling are to cut the position fully. Um, the reason for that is I looked over the position outline, the position job description, and the information provided by the current Chief Administrative Officer, and I found redundancies in every line that were provided with other departments and other positions. These redundancies included Chief of Staff, Chief Financial Officer, HR Director, Department Head, Town Lawyer, Economic Development, our select people, and our first select woman. And I found not one item on there that the Chief, um, operating, or the Chief CAO completed that does not overlap another position that has already been established in our town government for some time. This position was created in December of two thousand and nineteen, um, in an emergency meeting, and I feel that it does not, um, offer anything new to the town, and its value at the current, um, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars is not responsible at this point. Um, however, in discussions with my caucus, I understand that it is, um, a difficult time with COVID, and that an extra person at this time, um, would be helpful to the first select person. I do want to vocalize that as an elected leader, I am hoping that the first select woman is the person who does meet with our department heads, leads our town, because she is the one that we, as voters of this town, elected to fill the position. And I want her, because I have confidence in Brenda Kupchak as our leader, and I want her to be the one that does these jobs. And I feel that she can do these jobs, and I would have preferred to cut this position fully, but I did not have the, um, total, um, of my caucus to get the vote. So, I am, just want to bring this up for discussion, so that other members can discuss their views and their opinions. Um, I just feel that at this time of COVID, we can't afford this. Thank you.
Does anyone else, uh, have a comment on this item?
I do.
No other comments? Okay, who's that?
Um, Representative Iacono, sorry.
Oh, okay, uh, please go ahead.
Um, Madam First, uh, Madam, uh, Moderator, may, maybe we hear from the first select woman and, and, um, the role of the Chief Operating Officer, or the Chief Administrative Officer, and what this would mean for her department?
Yes, um, Mrs. Kupchak, are you available to speak?
Yes. Yeah, I was just waiting to see if anyone else wanted to speak, um, from the body. But, um, as I said, and I just, um, I just want to kind of reiterate, uh, what this, um, sort of journey of the last six months has been like. Uh, I, I run a business for thirty years, I worked in a congressional office as well. I, I had a lot of experience managing things, and even before I took over this job and had a full understanding, because, because honestly, no one really understands this job until they're sitting in it. And, but I had some sense of it, and I thought that even before I took this job, that, that the front office was understaffed. And that was evidenced by the, uh, research that I presented to the Board of Finance when I went and requested the transfer, that literally every single town around us has ex- a way more staff than Fairfield had in their front offices. So, when I did come in, it was very apparent to me that this office needed additional staff, and that was even before COVID. And so, I went and asked the Chief Financial Officer at the time and the town attorney, how would I go about trans- how would I go about being able to add staff to my office? And I was told that the only way to do that was to request a transfer from the Board of Finance, from other departments where there were surplus money into my office, uh, salary staff. So, I did the research with the Chief Financial Officer, the HR Director, and, uh, Selectman Tom Flynn assisted me, and we looked in departments and we found a posi- we found positions that were funded year after year, but were vacant for many years. So, we decided to do it in a way that was upfront and honest, and to use that funding that was already used and funded, and transfer it into my office so that I could utilize it in, in a way that was productive and critical. So, I followed the rules of our town, where you go, and request that the Board of Finance hold a special meeting so that I could have a transfer of funds. And as I spoke at that Board of Finance meeting, that, it, it's not an enviable position to go before a Board of Finance your second week in office and ask for a transfer of funds. Now, regardless of the funding that's already in the budget and not being used, but it's not a position you're put, you put yourself in unless you absolutely think you need it. And, you know, just to be clear, could you turn that off, please? Um, just to be clear, when I came into office, I think I was here three days, and I was in a car with the town attorney, heading up to Hartford to meet with the Department of Environmental Protection for almost a six-hour meeting about the fill pile scandal. This issue that was here when I got here is extraordinarily complicated and takes in a lot of my time. And again, it, it's hard for me to explain what it's like to be the first select woman of a town of sixty-one thousand people. Um, it, it's a lot of work, and, and to, to Representative Spohyer's, um, uh, remarks, I meet with all the department heads, uh, frequently, quite frequently. And, and I want to just also mention that our town, our town employees, department heads and employees, um, were, were dealing with a morale issue when I took in, came into this office. All of the things that happened over the last year, um, really, I think, was a bit demoralizing for these people. And it takes a lot of effort to meet with departments and to sit down and listen and learn and understand, but then when you understand them more closely, it's helpful to have staff to do that follow-up work, because the first select woman doesn't just work in town hall, but I'm also required to meet with a lot of different people. A lot of different people want to meet with the leader of the town. And there are events, not right now because COVID, but there were a lot of events before COVID. And, you know, people want you to come to their events or speak or give a proclamation or attend a neighborhood meeting, and as you all know, I mean, you're all representatives and you're, you're in the grassroots. You understand each of your neighborhoods have specific issues that are really important to them, whether it be, um, eight-dash-thirty-G issues, or a neighborhood issue, or like, uh, Representative Wolf can attest to, all the meetings on the Rooster River. These are things that take up, and there's a hundred of those different things. So, you're managing a town, but you're also working with the public on a, on a host of different issues, and then add in a public, a public corruption issue, an ongoing criminal investigation, and frankly, being in this office, when I first came in, the first two weeks, I was amazed about how antiquated our town, town halls were and the systems that we utilize to deliver services to our town. And, you know, not to be disrespectful, but that takes a lot of extra work to modernize and find efficiencies and to make your town run in a more productive way. And it's just simply not possible with all the different responsibilities coming at this office. There are hundreds of requests, emails every day. We instituted a newsletter, which I would say the vast majority of our residents really enjoy, but believe it or not, that takes a tremendous amount of time to put that newsletter together every single week, and we were sending out multiple newsletters. And we, we want to continue to have that sort of communication, constant communication with our community, so that they feel like they're informed about what is happening in our town at all times. And there are lots of questions from our community on a host of issues, and those things need to be responded to. It's not, um, it's not a ceremonial thing to be in this position, it requires a lot of effort. So, not only does the community expect my attention, but they also, the town, department heads and the employees, and the issues that come up every single day from residents who may be dissatisfied with something happening with our services. There is, I, I could go on for, for literally a week about the things, and, and, and I'm not trying to be, I, I don't know how to say it to you, but it, it's, it's, I, I, with my CAO and the Chief of Staff and, uh, Jen Carpenter in the office, literally, uh, there, there is no such thing as an eight or ten-hour day. I mean, even with that staff, we're working way more than that. Every single weekend, every single weekend, even during COVID and with no events to attend, we've all worked every single weekend. There's really quite a bit of work to go around. And if you even look, I mean, Al Starell might be able to speak to this, but when his mother was here in nineteen eighty-five, he had four staff members in her office, and that was thirty-five years ago. And the town has grown so much more and has so much more responsibilities and issues. And so, I would, I know that I asked, um, for the opportunity to have the Board of Finance be able to judge the performance of my new staff member, but unfortunately, he didn't really have that much time because COVID hit, what, three months ago? And it's been all hands on deck for that. So, I would just submit to the RTM that I would appreciate the opportunity to be able to show the value of this position for the residents of our town with a span of time that it even allows us to show that value to our community, and each and every person who gains some value for having your very responsive and engaged and active first select woman's office.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Representative Odenak, you have a comment? You having trouble unmuting?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Uh, Meredith Odenak, District Four. Um, just to expand on Representative Spohyer's point about redundancy, um, you have key positions that are already funded that haven't been filled. The CFO position needs to be filled, and if these positions were filled, we wouldn't have, um, the, these gaps, um, that your CAO is filling. Um, so, I really want to encourage actually all of the, um, positions that have been funded to be filled. Um, I know it's been months since they've been vacant, um, and to just add on to your point about morale, um, to leave department head positions vacant and to cut lower-level positions, further spreading DPW staff thinly, you just continue to impact efficiency and morale in offices.
Unmute. And if I, can I re- uh, respond to that? Um, I, I just do also want to offer for the body that, um, in, in two thousand and eleven, there were five full-time staff people in the first selectman's office, and in two thousand and fourteen, it dropped to four full-time staff people. So, this is not an unusual thing, and it really has nothing to do with the CFO position. I had to, uh, let go of the CFO, who was subsequently arrested, and so, uh, Mr. Remmer was kind enough to jump in and assist me during that period, because it's very difficult to hire a CFO, it's a specialized thing. I know in the past, it sort of has been a political position, um, and to put out an RFP for a Chief Financial Officer, it actually takes a tremendous amount of effort, and we were heading right into the budget season, and I needed to, I needed to move and start building a budget. And I asked our comptroller, who has been with the Finance Department for twelve years, to step up and assist in that area, and she's done a very good job. And so, yes, everybody's all hands on deck in, at the time, everybody's working really hard to try to fill the gaps, as you would in any organization, it's a lot of teamwork.
Thank you. Are there any other, um, comments? Um, let's see. Uh, Shar- Miss, Representative Pistilli, did you, oh, let's see, there's a few people, I think, I've been missing, I'm sorry, I, I didn't see this. Um, Representative Jacobs? He was listening.
Representative Pistilli, Pistilli was ahead of me.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, yeah, actually, let me go to the very beginning, hang on one second, because I'm seeing that I missed quite a few. Um, yes, Representative Pistilli.
The list is summarized at the bottom of the chat.
Yeah, uh, Madam Moderator.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Representative Jacobs made a list, if that's okay, just if everybody can check if they agree with the list.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Moderator, through you, uh, to the Madam First Selectwoman, I just, I had a couple of related questions. Um, so, uh, I was wondering, um, like, what the timeline is expected to be for hiring a Chief Financial Officer, and if, um, you know, if that, if that role has been posted, and, um, also when we have a new Chief Financial Officer onboard, how you would expect, um, the CAO position to change, since so many of those responsibilities were overlapping in the last couple of months?
Um, so, as far as the CFO position, that's a personnel-
So as far as the CFO position, that's a personnel matter, so I'm not going to discuss that in the meeting. But as far as the CAO, with the original things that I had asked for at the Board of Finance meeting, I know you were at that meeting. Those are things, those are all of the things, reorganizing, modernizing and looking for efficiencies and attending meetings on my behalf when I have to be at other meetings were part of that package. But he did step in to assist during the budget process because obviously we needed the help.
Okay, and then are there specific goals in mind? So like, I know one of the things that you had mentioned is that you would be able to, you know, prove to us that there is a return on investment. So can you, are you outlining specific goals that you'll be able to measure and report back to us a year, you know, a year from now? Why it's worth the incremental investment in a CAO as opposed to, you know, another sort of administrative or deputy chief of staff type of position?
So yes, absolutely. I mean, as we said and as I had said to the Board of Finance and spoke about how I wanted to provide efficiencies, reorganize our town government, institute practices and policies to have efficiencies, save money and be able to offer a much more effective and responsive town government. We didn't have that time because COVID obviously shut us down. So I'm hoping to be able to show how this is valuable and how it was valuable back when there were a lot more staff members in the First Select Person's Office. I believe I'll be able to prove that and show that with at least a year's time to the residents of Fairfield.
So then, as a follow-up question, it seems like, I mean, I know there's still a lot going on with COVID, but hopefully there's a slight break in the action where you might be able to, you know, provide us with an outline of the goals for the next year so that, you know, this is a position that we just watch closely just because of the incremental, the incremental expenditure from the office overall. So if you could provide us with those goals just so that we can, you know, have them for our own information, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Representative Durell. Representative Durell, you're on mute. I don't know if you know that. Oh, now I hear you, yes.
No, okay, I apologize. Alex Durell, RTM Three. At last year's budget meetings or the year before, I remember Mark Barnhart was talking about economic development. And we're not only in competition with the rest of the world, but even if they pick the New York metropolitan area, we're in competition with Westchester, Long Island, New Jersey. And even if they pick Connecticut, we're in competition with Stanford, Norwalk, Greenwich. I mean, we need all hands on deck in order to help us make a good impression. I mean, it's still out there. We lost GE, it's still out there. Trust me, friends of mine, think about it. I mean, this, and also with the whole COVID situation, I mean, this is like a reincarnation of Ricky and Lucy moving out here. There aren't going to be many days or opportunities like this again. And once again, the more people we have on deck who can help us bring in the economic development as well as people buying these houses that people are saying is happening in the real estate world. I mean, Brenda's run a successful business for thirty years. The Board of Finance seems to be a good job with our bond rating. I think I can put my faith financially in both of them. I mean, I've owned a house for over thirty years. And I just, I think it'd be short-sighted or cutting your nose to spite your face if we minimized, maybe not minimized, but, you know, took a haircut to someone's job who's been there for, what, a hundred and fifty days? With a hundred of them having been dealing with this pandemic. And I just think, we got to think more long-term. If it doesn't work out, okay, in a couple of years or something like that. But, I mean, give the guy a chance or give our First Selectwoman a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Jacobs?
In the motion of cutting the position entirely, I will vote against that. However, I do think that the salary that was, sorry, Representative Jacobs, District Three, I do believe that the salary associated with the position of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year, which makes it one of the most highly-paid positions in the town, in an unproven, untested position with a murky description, I think that's a bit egregious. I would definitely support it if it came to cutting the salary down to a more reasonable level. And if the position ends up providing the value that it is supposed to, we revisit it in a year and we make it right. But as of right now, in a situation where lots of people in the country, in our state, in our RTM are taking pay cuts, there needs to be shared pain for the safety of the town. And I think a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is an egregious salary. Thank you.
Madam Moderator, can I address that comment?
Yes.
So to your comment, Representative Jacobs, you know, I asked for an add to the Economic Development Department because I wanted some help to boost our tax base and our grant list. And the goal has always been to lower taxes for the residents of the town of Fairfield. That's the goal. And to provide efficient and great service to our residents. I lost all of the positions I wanted to add to our town government to do those things. They were all cut. And frankly, in the real world, you need to hire for talent, you have to pay for talent. And I'm going to need that extra help. And frankly, I need a qualified, well-paid person to assist me because now we're not just looking at building our grant list, I'm looking at saving our grant list because of the economic impact to our community because of COVID. I, we have a lot of work to do. And the ultimate goal, the ultimate goal is to provide a safe and good town for our residents, services that they can count on in an efficient way and taxes that are affordable, affordable for the people of our town. And together, my staff, my CAO, which I believe is an integral part, and I'm not alone in that thinking, you just go have to do is look around to the towns that surround us. They have this staff, they have the appropriate staff, and they're running efficient towns. And their tax rates are lower, a lot of them than ours. Now, I'm not saying that one position is going to be a torpedo, but obviously, you know, you can only handle so many things. And so all I've asked from the very beginning is a chance to do the job that the people of Fairfield elected me to do. And that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Representative Vergara?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Representative Vergara for District Seven. I think that this increase represents a fifty or a little bit over a fifty percent increase to the regular payroll of the First Selectwoman's Office.
Excuse me, one second. Can I just ask, everybody mute their phones? I'm hearing some background noise. Sorry, Jill, please continue.
So this is a fifty percent increase in one year to regular payroll. And the amendment or the motion that Representative Spohiar has offered represents something a little bit more reasonable, a thirty-five percent increase over last year's budget, which would be easier for people at this time when we're all struggling economically. It's hard to justify such a big jump, such a big jump in one year for one office. And I just wonder whether it's better to do it, it's more prudent to do it slower over a couple of years, maybe incrementally now when you come back and add on if you still need it and you see utility for the job. I just think what's resonated with me during this time is doing more with less. You know, we have had very serious issues in the past, like Hurricane Sandy, and we've worked through it. I think that there's, you're capable and I think that you can do this with less. You can do this in a way that can help the taxpayer.
And I'll thank you, Representative, thank you, Representative Vergara. And I would like to just, I would like to Madam Moderator, I'd just like to address that. I would just like to address Representative Vergara's comment.
No, can you address the other, there are four people still waiting on the RTM and I'd like to let them talk and then we'll definitely let you speak, okay? I just, there's a lot of people in line, I want to give them a chance. Representative McCormick?
Madam Moderator? I just want to address the comment that Representative Vergara said that this office staff, now again, I'll go back, in two thousand eleven, there were five full-time staff members in this office.
Point of order, we have a queue. Point of order, we have a queue of people waiting to speak.
We do have a queue. I know you'd like to respond, Madam First Selectwoman, but we do have a queue of RTM members and I do need to let them comment. But please keep your comments and we'll get to you. Representative McCormick?
Hear me?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I just, I just find it a little bit concerning, and this is my first term on the RTM, but I know that there's been an extensive history here of there being dissatisfaction, let's say, with prior administrations and people that have been cut from different budgets with different RTM members, et cetera. And I can't help but believe that this motion that's been put forth for discussion purposes at this point is not politically motivated, quite frankly. And I know that there was a lot of discord and unrest when Brenda approached the Board of Finance with her request.
Point of order, point of order. This is not a way to talk to other representatives of this body. I don't, I don't appreciate being called partisan or political. Thank you.
Okay.
That's a big assumption.
In these unprecedented times with a worldwide pandemic and assuming a town with a widespread public corruption scandal and giving our First Selectwoman basically sixty days to figure it all out because we've been shut down for ninety days, is really disingenuous. And to come back now during this budget cycle and say, prove to us how this is going to benefit our town when she hasn't even had the ability to do that, I think is, quite frankly, completely unfair. The other question I have, and I'm not sure who to pose this to, is assuming you were to cut this position entirely, what is the taxpayer, per taxpayer savings? Is it a dollar a year, is it fifty cents a year? How much is each taxpayer going to save as a result of taking a gamble to cut this position? Thank you.
I'm going to take a chance to just comment for a second that I know when Representative, when the First Selectwoman asked for these roles a couple of weeks after she took office, she said that, you know, we all agreed that at budget time, we would be looking at this. And she understood that and I understood her to be ready to justify it honestly. So I think it's not, it's not a surprise that we're raising this at budget time. It's my two cents. But Representative Wolk?
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
I think, I think it is a surprise when you factor in a public pandemic that has shut down our society for the last ninety days. I don't think she's been given a fair shot to make it work. And for people to now question that at this time during this budget cycle is unfair. If the pandemic weren't factored in, I kind of would be on board with saying, well, how has this helped our town so far? And how can we justify the spending going forward? But in light of the pandemic, I think it's completely unfair to our First Selectwoman and her entire staff in office and our town and our taxpayers to date to expect that she's got to be called to the carpet to account for what this person has accomplished in this short period of time. Thank you.
Okay. Representative Wolk?
Hi, Jay Wolk, District Five. This is through you, Madam Moderator, to our First Selectwoman. So first, First Selectwoman Cupcheck, that I just want to thank you for everything that you've been doing through this pandemic. We all recognize the great work that you have been doing. It is not easy. But now getting to what I'm about to say, you know, through this, discussing this position, you know, I've been on the RTM a few years. And going back a few years ago, I remember that the Chief of Staff position was cut to part-time. I thought it was unfair considering, and then the other part about that is that I feel that if the Chief of Staff position was going to be cut, it should have been cut from your office and not the RTM. That said, our former First Selectwoman had to deal with a half a select person, a Chief of Staff, sorry, a half a Chief of Staff person, part-time. So he had to endure all what he had to go through to go through this. I'm not saying that this should be to you. I think it's unfair. I think that should be your decision, you know, to cut the Chief of Staff to part-time. So my question is, and also, you know, the tax collector's position was cut also. I thought that was unfair. And they're struggling in their office for another person to help out. But anyway, so my question to you, Brenda, is that, is, do you agree with that? That that cut, I mean, could you imagine, could you imagine if you had a half, a part-time Chief of Staff right now with what's going on? I mean, you wouldn't be able, you can't deal with, you know, you're having, you need another position that was created to help you during this time. And I agree with that and you do need the help. So do you agree with what I am saying?
Thank you, Representative Wolk. And yes, I think that to run a town of sixty-one thousand people, you need the appropriate staff to do the job that the people of Fairfield ask you to do. Listen, some towns choose to run their, you know, maybe some towns don't want to be as proactive. I am a very proactive type of person. I want to be engaged and involved in every single thing. And I want to make sure that the residents of this town have a responsive government at all times, to all things or anything that they may need. And I just want to say, thank you also, that we are, we worked really hard to give the RTM figures and reductions to get to a zero. Right now, we're at a zero percent tax increase in a pandemic, zero percent. And we're discussing reducing important staff that I am saying very, very humbly that I need, that I need this help. And honestly, reducing the entire amount, I think that we did a calculation today, it's something like, I don't know, twenty-five cents a person, household for this position that can really have a huge impact on how we provide efficiencies for our community, for every single taxpayer in this town and be able to help me do this job, which by the way, is very demanding. And so I'm asking just very humbly that you give me the opportunity to show how important it is to have qualified, talented staff working for the residents of our town in the First Selectwoman's Office. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, I'm fine, thanks.
Thank you, Representative.
Peter, Representative Tallman?
Hi, thank you, Madam Moderator. Peter Tallman, District Eight. I just want to say I agree with Representative McCormick and Durell. The time is now, I think, to capitalize on some commercial development. And if Brenda gets some free time to do that, or Tom, whatever it is, waiting a year, it might be too late. I've seen all the New York plates driving around. So I think we should just keep this in place as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Gottlieb, oh, sorry, Representative Steele?
Hi, Jeff Steele, District Two. Stating the obvious, we're in unprecedented times, there's no doubt. Everyone is under pressure, families are under pressure, business is under pressure, budget's under pressure. And we all have to be conscious of that. I'm glad we brought this topic up, I'm glad it was raised. These are good questions. We've asked the First Selectwoman some great questions. I think she's come back with some great answers. She also clearly, I think, needs this position. And she's right, to get good talent, you have to pay for it. And I think because we're unprecedented times, she is bogged down in every direction and we need to move forward. And if this position can help her do that, it's for the betterment of not just the First Selectwoman and the office, it's for the town, it's for all of us, whether it's on the revenue front, on the tax front. Dealing with COVID alone brings a myriad of issues. I mean, it's massive from health issues and death, the closed businesses, closed schools, and now the reopening gradually of everything here. I mean, the First Selectwoman had to deal with that and then running the town through a normal basis. So I think this position is justified. I think she has justified it in front of us for the last thirty, forty minutes. I'm glad it was brought up, but I do not support this reduction. I'm glad it was brought up, but I do not support this, this reduction. And, uh, I fully support Brenda's decision to bring this position on board and yeah, let's all see how it goes. But we certainly ought to give her this, this opportunity to, to, to bring on the people she needs.
Thank you. Um, Representative Gottlieb.
Oh, thank you, Madam Moderator, Julie Gottlieb, uh, District Five. Uh, I think I'd like to come at this a, a slightly different way. There's no question that these are extraordinary times and, um, Ms. Kupchak's office is, is facing, and she is facing an overwhelming amount of work. And, and I hope that, that, that you know that we are cognizant and appreciative, um, of everything that you and your staff are doing. I think that's important to say, um, because I don't, I don't want that overlooked in, in the comments and questions that we have. Um, it is certainly no secret that I am not a fan of how the position, um, was introduced, but I don't want to belabor that because I would still be saying the things I'm about to say had it gone through the, what I would deem more appropriate and correct channels. Um, and it is not motivating my decision, I'd like to make that quite clear. For me, this is about the, this is the bottom line. I, I tend to look at things from a financial perspective. This is, as we've all said, times where we need to be looking at the bottom line. We need to be employing financial conservatism and shared pain. Um, you might recall that, um, during our hearings a few weeks ago, I asked Ms. Kupchak if she'd consider looking at places where she could find additional savings within her own office. And, and to be fair, she, she did say that she would, would look into that. I was hoping to see, um, I was hoping to see something there, which is why, why I'm commenting now. Um, an, an increase of over 50% in expense for, for, over last year for that office, understanding that you may need that position, and I think we've all heard the arguments for that, is still greatly concerning to me in an environment that, that we're in. Other town departments did not get requested position ads and made sacrifices and, and honestly, I just feel this office should not be an exception. Um, everybody has to do more with less. Um, so again, this is not about whether, this particular argument is not whether the position should be there or not, it's a question of whether there should be some shared pain and whether there should be, as so many of us are going through, some kind of recognition of, of what needs to happen. Um, one last point, um, that I'd like to make, uh, we did take a look at neighboring towns and mayors' first selectmen offices. I could not find, um, a, a chief administrator, yeah, sorry, chief administrative officer. Um, Stanford has a population of a little under 130,000. They have a mayor, a chief of staff, a senior executive assistant, and a special assistant of communications. Norwalk has a population of 89,000. They have a mayor, an assistant to the mayor, an executive assistant to the mayor, a communications manager slash grant coordinator, and an administrative assistant. Westport has a population of 21,000, sorry, 27,000, for the first selectman and office manager and administrative assistant. Um, I will leave that there. I do not support, uh, a cut solely, and this was a very difficult decision, I went back and forth quite a bit, um, but because of the circumstances, because we're going through a pandemic, these are extraordinary times, um, I acknowledge that the first select woman needs help and it is for that reason only that I'm not eliminating this position. And I do expect to see very clear ROI and delivery upon the promises that were made in December. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Representative Spohlier would like to speak regarding her motion.
Um, thank you. I, I think this has been an effective chat, but I would like to extend my motion at this time.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone else who wants to speak? Okay. Uh, okay. Um, thank you very much, so we're, we're finished with that motion. Are there any other motions or any other comments regarding the budget?
Madam Moderator?
Yes?
Um, I would just like to, uh, say that, um, this has been an extraordinarily difficult first six months and, um, wow, I had a lot of aspirations for our town and I had a lot of good ideas and vision, uh, to move our town in a, in a, a direction that I thought was positive and, and productive. And then our pand- pandemic hit. And so it has had a, a, a huge impact on, on the budget and, and the entire town government. And I would just like to say that, um, I, I, when I first came in, I, I worked really hard to extend my hand across the aisle and invite your caucus into my office and work directly with you and your leadership and have tried to remain in constant contact with you and the majority leader as well as the minority to make sure that all voices were heard and that we were all working together and everyone felt comfortable reaching out to me in a bipartisan way. I am proud that we were able to deliver a 0% tax increase to the residents of Fairfield that was very difficult to do, but I'm happy that we were able to do that in this situation that we are facing. And I hope that we can all come together in a bipartisan way because at the end of the day, I think that that's what the residents of Fairfield expect, not just from me, but from all of us. I think they, they want policy over politics and they want people working together for the best, greater good of our community, especially in light of the things that have been happening over the last couple of days. So I look forward to working with every one of you as we move forward in the next year. And again, I will reiterate, my door is open and my phone is open. I hope you will each feel comfortable reaching out to me in the weeks and months ahead.
Thank you. Um, I do want to thank, at least on behalf of our caucus and maybe the whole R T M, um, the Board of Finance for the hard work they did. They had to really change the, um, the budget that the Board of Selectmen approved because of the pandemic and they worked very hard on that and, and got it cut down to a great low number. And then, um, the majority and minority leaders, uh, and the caucuses worked together with the help of the administration. And, um, I think it's turned out to be, uh, I think, hopefully we'll see it when we vote in a minute, um, that, uh, it was a great bipartisan effort and, um, I think it'll help the residents of the town. So, um, let's, uh, take a vote. So we have, I just want to make sure we have the numbers correct and I will probably need, uh, help with this. We've got the 924, um, is, is Ms. Gardner on the, the line? I'm hoping you can verify.
Yes, I'm right here. Mm-hmm. I am here going to hit.
Okay. So we have a $924,679, um, reduction, that would be initial motion for the buses and the fuel savings. Um, and then we had a reduction for, um, cuts to the D P W rolls in the amount of Um, and I believe that was it. So if you can tell us what the final number is that we're voting on, that would be a great help.
First, let me add up all your cuts. Um, the total.
Sure.
Amount of cut is $1,117,007. The budget, the town budget as amended that you will be voting on is $317,177,779.
Thank you very much. Um, so we have on the table a motion to approve the budget in the amount, as Ms. Gardner said, of $317,177,779. Um, are we ready to vote? Can everyone please unmute their microphones? Okay. Okay, all in favor? Please say aye.
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 Oppo, anyone opposed? Any extension? Okay, the, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for your very hard work on this. Do I have a motion to, uh, adjourn the meeting? Uh, Representative Param and a second, Representative Distilli. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Thank you, everyone. Um, have.
Nice job, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Karen.
Good night. Thank you, good night.
Thank you, Karen. Let's celebrate.
You're welcome. Thanks.
For a cool drink, yep.